Everybody rise, please. Start reciting our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Tated by the United States of America. The United Republic for which stands one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, Alexandra DiVincenzi-Bush is gonna leave some prayer.
Good morning. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we ask today that you bestow grace upon our Board of Commissioners and everybody within this room, that we can get along, act fairly, and do what's best in the interests of the county and the county's employees. In your name we pray, amen.
Okay, welcome to our regular meeting, August ninth. Uh, our next public workshop will be next Tuesday at two thirty P M. It's a time change from what our normal time uh due to previous obligations that the board has, some of the board members have. Uh, Tuesday, August twenty, August fifteenth to two thirty P M in this same room. And our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, August sixteenth in this room at ten thirty A M. Um, so. We will duly note that with the press also about the time change uh for Tuesday.
Matter.
Um, there is a couple of economic development things that some of the commissioners have received invites to um that I plan on attending, and I believe there's one.
Is there something for the Board of Commissioners?
It was not to the Board of Commissioners. They were impersonal invites, personal only, it said on my invite.
As did mine.
Mine personally only. Uh, possibly it's from somebody, but it was, it was a personal invite to me. Um, not for the board if I can't speak on behalf of the people that invited. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Uh, here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mister Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated August second, twenty twenty-three, and accept and approve the video recording of the August second, twenty twenty-three Commissioners' regular meeting as the official meeting minutes.
A motion approved.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco. Item number two is to approve the bills.
A motion approved.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
A motion to transfer monies is listed.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco. Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco. Item number five is to transfer approach appropriations.
A motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Question, I have not, the only one I didn't receive backup information from with an explanation of their transfer with this probate court. And the person acting as clerk um refused to send the email to the court, and we need to um together make sure that we're understanding the reasons for the transfers, and that should be forwarded to the board. Everyone else cooperated, uh, and our own office staff would not.
Commissioner, I've seen emails back and forth from the probate court that specifically said if Commissioner Frenchco wants to talk to us or wants these, she needs the call. Came directly from the judge. Judge Harwood said, if you want it, you need to call her directly, not a clerk, not myself, not Mara.
Court, you're not even, that they actually, the other court senate, this is probate, you have no idea what you're talking about. It's a different judge, and it doesn't matter what a judge says. We're the Board of Commissioners, we approve their finances, and we need to be having the lo- the level of oversight that our taxpayers elected us to provide.
We.
And our clerk needs to make sure, and the interim clerk needs to make sure that they're actually reaching out because they work for the commissioners. It's, it's, it's just an absolute disgrace that she refuses to do that.
That's true. Um, these are not new monies. These are transfers between line items within that were already budgeted by the commissioners, and this is an elected office that has the ability to do that on their own.
We just trust everyone. I understand.
You don't trust everyone. We can't, this is money that's already been allocated. We've already budgeted this.
Other communities.
There's no new money.
Other communities do it the right way. I'm just, I, I pray and hope that one day.
Communities don't micromanage other elected officials. These are other elected officials that transfer dollars within their own line items.
Would you like samples of other communities? Have you done your research?
Have you done your research, Commissioner?
Yes.
This is money that's already been appropriated by you and by this board.
No, that's not how it should be done. That's not how other communities that do it right do it because they have a budget and finance person, and it's most appropriate.
I suggest you go to those counties then. I, I don't know what to tell you, honestly.
How about?
These games need to stop. This money has already been budgeted and appropriated by this board.
And there's a transfer because they.
There's a transfer within line items that is their own budget.
There, there is always.
They're moving money from one line item to another line item, but it's already money that they have.
Yes, and it's, it's money that we need to have oversight with.
And no, we don't. That's an elected office.
No, we don't. Okay.
That's an elected office. All we need to have oversight for is the budget, and what we budget to them. We don't micromanage the.
No, actually, that's.
That's incorrect.
That's the reason why we're over budget is because there's no budget oversight.
There, that is completely incorrect.
That is, no, when you just allow them to do what they want and to spend like drunken sailors.
They're not spending, there's, this is money they've already had that they're spending.
In general, we're.
Again, I don't know if you understand the concept. This is money you already gave them.
Yeah.
If this was a new appropriation, I'd be with you.
Wait, so we wait, and so we just wait and see until there, there's a fire, and then we put it out there. I'm just saying there should be a regular level of consistent oversight where the commissioners understand and have read and reviewed what the transfer.
Let me ask you something. What, we received the budget on Monday, correct? Did everybody receive the budget on Monday, or the, not the budget, the, the agenda? Did we receive it on Monday? I received it in my email on Monday. You had three days to talk to the probate court to ask them whatever questions you wanted to ask.
It's the, the job of the clerk to prepare what.
No, it isn't.
To make the decisions, and they should be requesting these things.
You have a judge in writing saying, and other judges that concur with that judge, saying that they want you to call them personally if you have a question.
It's an email that I've asked staff to do, and I, while we understand that you consistently refuse to have staff do what I need, but this is something that is very basic class task that an employee can do.
I'm not refusing anybody to do anything. What I'm doing is another elected official has asked you to reach out to them if you have questions, and you're not doing.
Staff to completely not do what I've asked them to do.
That's not true.
They send it out.
They can't do what they can't do.
Okay, so.
And it does, it's just say to board members.
She can send it out.
Advise staff what to do, and if it's an unreasonable, or it's a busy work type of thing, or if it's something you can do yourself, I'm not gonna prove it.
It takes two board members to advise a staff what to do.
Uh, when you go in there bullying people around, ordering them to do something, and they have questions on whether they should do it or not, yeah, it does take two.
Again, so if everybody's aware, these are transfers. These are, this is money that's been budgeted, okay? This is not new money. This is not, can I speak, please? So I'd like to explain, this is not new money. This is money that we've given to departments that we've, that we've awarded and allocated to departments for them to spend. Now, how they spend that within their own line items is up to them.
Okay. No, okay.
And, and people, she's talking about.
If it was new money, I'd agree with you.
It, it's every week, it, it's consistent, and it doesn't matter the amount. There should be a common practice that these, that these come in, because then what, we don't even have the staff to do the, the oversight, you know, but.
If we were talking about new money, Commissioner, I would agree with you. This isn't new money. This is money that we've appropriated.
You didn't agree when you, when the budget was set and you rubber stamped it? Because you didn't participate in it.
You didn't even, you weren't even at the budget hearings the one year. As a commissioner, how about that statutory duty? You weren't even here.
That's.
You weren't here. You were on the phone.
When my back was broken and I called in?
You weren't in a commissioner's budget hearing meeting, but you keep talking about budgets.
I was on the phone with my.
It's laughable.
Okay.
And let's move on.
Okay, so.
Clerk call the vote.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because the clerk did not obtain what was required.
Because probate didn't turn over what you wanted. Don't go point the finger at any employee on, on someone else.
She didn't ask. She actually acknowledged in an email that she didn't even ask. So because the clerk or acting clerk did not obtain or even request what I asked her to do, because then if she.
Let's read the emails.
She would have seized.
Let's read the emails, Commissioner.
Would have C C'd me. I got another email.
Let's read the email.
Too, Danny. I got a copy of it, just came in.
This is what the clerk has told you, just so we're clear for the record.
This is pertaining to business and not personal, uh.
It was business.
Something that's not signed by somebody that you're behind. You don't even want to open that.
This, this.
Already got a team all over that.
This.
Don't even wanna do that.
Just real quick for the record, this came at nine oh six from, uh, because Commissioner Frenchco waited until today to email the clerk.
Not true, it was yesterday.
Can I please, can I please finish?
Incorrect.
Can I please finish?
Read the email from yesterday.
At four fifty-three yesterday. Nobody's here at four fifty-three.
Correct.
So that's when you sent it. Four fifty-three, nobody's here.
Until seven going over the budget items.
Okay, okay, so you say, and she responds to you, Ms. Frenchco, the courts have told Paula and I numerous times that you need to contact them directly for additional information. This has been to relate, relate to you several times.
They don't work, they don't work for the, 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 the clerks do not work for the judge. They work for the commissioners. If the commissioners request something, they should obtain it. It takes two seconds for them to send an email, C C me, because then I could respond. That's all I'm asking. Send the email if they.
Takes two seconds for you to pick up the phone and ask the judge what you want to ask him, as opposed to having it relay through a third party.
See that, that's what is, that's what is the best thing to do, and.
Well, I disagree. I disagree. You gotta take some initiative for yourself.
Number six.
Item number six is to receive the amended certificate of the County Budget Commission number sixteen dash twenty twenty-three.
A motion approved.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to establish the creation of Office Three Sixty-Five Fund, known as Fund Seven Forty.
Sorry, you guys need to be quiet back there during the meeting. Okay, go ahead.
Item number seven is to establish the creation of Office Three Sixty-Five Fund, known as Fund Seven Forty, for use by the Trumbull County Auditor.
A motion approved.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Okay, um, per the auditor, item number eight, um, we've decided to remove that from the agenda.
Oh, is that because I have my request to see the meeting?
No idea. The, the auditor said she wanted to remove it because there's something mistaken on there, so.
Well, that.
We're gonna do it.
The deadline is not talked.
Consider debate something that's not on the agenda.
Why?
The hunter put it on, she wants it off, she'll re-put it up next week.
I wanna, does, I wanna have an opportunity because it's still on my agenda because I didn't receive anything um printed or.
It wasn't reprinted.
It was not.
It was not reprinted.
She just scratched.
We all have it on our.
So it's still on the agenda, and, and the way a meeting works, Danny, what would you do?
Motion to table this, item number eight till next week.
Make a motion to table or I'll second.
Okay, and then discussion. I want to say that this, uh, when I was reviewing the, the, the entire agenda, I noticed, and I was grateful that they actually, on, on this, this information, they gave us inside versus outside, which wasn't on what we received last time, which is why I didn't vote on receiving it. There is, um, it says that it was determined by the Budget Commission and authorize it, that authorizing the necessary levies. So if it was determined by the Budget Commission, I just wanted to see when the Budget Commission met, if there were meetings or notices or minutes. Did the Budget Commission meet?
Meet that, but I'm in wait to, I need to process on, and that's what I, I review this with my employees this morning. We're going to review with Mister Danzo. This does not have to be on
Okay.
Agenda today. If we don't, we have to on October first. We want to make sure we follow process.
Thank you.
I review.
Okay.
Make sure that we follow.
That was Auditor Martha Yoder replaying.
That, okay. Thank you for taking that off until you can confirm that it was correct. I appreciate it.
Okay, so I'm gonna take a roll for motion to table. Mister Mullaway.
Yes.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister or Ms. Frenchco.
Uh, yes, and I want to make sure that when it comes back on that we have some type of minutes or documentation that shows that, that it was determined by the Budget Commission and that there's even minutes or something that confirms it. Thank you.
Okay, item number nine is to concur with the county engineer to grant special annual supplier fleet permits by the companies listed.
A motion approved.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number ten is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mister Dare and Mancini to the full-time, non-bargaining position of office administrator with the Trumbull County Building Inspection Department, effective August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, pay range eleven, five years, based on experience and qualifications at a pay rate of thirty-one fifty-seven per hour, and serve a one hundred and twenty-day probationary period. And just to note, Mister Mancini has successfully passed a pre-employment drug screen and background check.
A motion approved.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Discussion. Um, I wanted to say that this is a extremely qualified employee. I, I looked at his resume yesterday. Um, he started, he used to, he's come through some of the similar, um, places of employment and working in the same programs that I did, so I, I, I saw that he was a housing rehabilitation specialist for C T consultants and has a tremendous background. Then he went to another company that took over, and he's worked all over, uh, the nor- northeastern Ohio um, as it relates to doing inspections and work write-ups. He's, uh, he's qualified, uh, lead contractor and other, and, and actually was a contractor himself. So he will, he understands how to close out projects and make sure things that are done correctly. I think he's gonna be a great asset, and you know, it's, when I look at some, some of the hires, um, you know, sometimes you can see it's political, and sometimes you can see that it was excellent, and this was absolutely an excellent hire.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Alex, did you want to say something?
I just want to know for the record, I, that a comment, the last comment, since I've been here in my human resources director capacity, this is Alexander DiVincenzi-Bush, Human Resources Director, the hires have not been political. I am glad that you recognize that. Thank you.
Right, that's, okay, well, that's not what I said. It wasn't related.
Let's move on.
No, the one with Becky Smith absolutely was.
Oh, please.
So it wasn't even advertised.
Mister Cantala Mesa. Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Let's move on if she doesn't want to agree.
Yes.
Okay, item number twelve. The Trumbull County Planning Commission is requesting that the Commissioner's clerk advertise for competitive sealed bids for the furnishing of all labor, material, and equipment necessary for, and incidental to the construction for.
I'm sorry, if we're just interrupting, I want to say, and the J F S form, Alex, thanks.
I don't do their hiring.
Uh, you're the H R director, and they come through.
Oh, you don't have the floor commission, Frenchco.
Neither.
You can pick on employees on your own time.
Can we please stick to the agenda?
Yep.
The Planning Commission.
Should do during the workshops, public workshops. Okay.
The Planning Commission is requesting that the Commissioner's clerk advertise for competitive sealed bids for the furnishing of all labor, material, and equipment necessary for, and incidental to the construction for the Trumbull County Planning Commission Building Roof Replacement Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Um, discussion. Uh, I don't know if the public is aware that the roof and the ceiling collapsed in the Planning Commission building. Um, the roof was torn off in wind. We've known about the county, who's known about the problem for years, just like they've known about a lot of the problems with, uh, with the failure to plan for preventative maintenance. Uh, and it always ends up costing more when you wait until after something deteriorates and collapses than if you actually fix it the first time, if, or when it needs done. Uh, that's what happens as I've been here with the, um, air conditioning.
If you knew about it, why didn't you fix it in the last two years?
It's what happened.
Two and a half years, Commissioner.
Two and a half years? Why didn't you fix it then?
That's what happened.
Why'd you wait for the collapse? And then I get to get here and it collapses on me?
What's the habit?
I'm, I'm just asking a question. If you knew about it for two years, why did you leave it that way? You just said you've known about it for two years.
Deflecting, but I'll continue if you'll be quiet and.
Okay, I'm just, I thought it was a reasonable question. Why you let it sit and wait?
Okay, so whenever the air conditioning went out, and I, it was my first year here, and ended up costing hundreds of thousand dollars more to replace that when it could have been prevented, uh, based on the advice of the Maintenance Department. This is a, a common problem and a theme in Trumbull County where we wait until something's beyond repair to try to fix it. That's what happened with the, uh, the high, the highway engineers building as well, and now it's estimated to be over a million dollars in repairs. So, um, and if I can, I just wanna, uh, end with this. Well, not yet. So now that the roof got so bad that it, it's, that it actually collapsed and an area on the ceiling fell in, now that affects the carpet, it affects the dry, the drop ceiling, it affects the ceiling, the drywall, everything underneath. So what could have been a smaller job turns into a bigger job when you completely ignore it and you put out fires. I wish the county would do better planning relative to that, and I will respond to Mister Malloy. If I am not even able to get employees to bring me contracts back to review and sign or ask them to send emails for me, how does anyone think that I?
Put it on the agenda as a commissioner.
Let me tell you what I have done as a commissioner, uh, and I, and I will make this motion from the floor, uh, in, in a moment. Go ahead. We'll take the, take the roll.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes. And then I'm making a motion from the floor, and this motion comes as maybe the, I want to say the seventh time. And both my previous board voted it down several times, and so did the new board, so no one can claim that they didn't try to accomplish this. My motion from the floor is to cause all county buildings to be graded within ninety days with development of a spreadsheet for each building that includes major systems, dates of installation, upgrades, and identification of required upgrades and repairs, and other applicable information. Trumbull County built, this is the note that I had every time I presented it. Trumbull County buildings are not graded, nor is there a record of buildings with improvement dates. In order to be fiscally responsible, plan financially, and plan for preventative maintenance, this is a required guide. Preventative maintenance needs, ha- needs have been ignored to the point where it costs more for repairs and has caused the ca- caused the county to demolish its own buildings due to deterioration. Preventative maintenance can only occur with graded buildings and proper record-keeping. So again, for the seventh time, given the fact that we've had roofs, ceilings collapsed, we've had millions of dollars required for, uh, repairing or in replacing roofs that haven't been touched in seventy years, I think that, and we're demolishing the wing building. Uh, I think that it's important that we actually pass this this time because I've tried to get the board to pass this, uh, about seven times now. So this is my motion. Is it gonna die again?
The Maintenance Director knows exactly where the problems are. The problems in the past before you got here weren't with preventative maintenance or with a capital improvement fund. It was with dollars and funds. The, the county was hit very hard with the loss of the local government fund, the loss of, um, the sales tax revenue, which was not generated like it was just now. We had to put off a lot of these projects.
Where is it? Where is the record-keeping for that?
It was the Capital Improvement Fund.
The record-keeping for all of the buildings and how old.
Labeling, labeling something gonna make it go away?
No, you need money. You need money. You can label all these buildings you want.
When did the capital improvement fairy come and give us a new pot of money?
Do we?
They did.
Because we laid it.
It all sounds good as a soundbiter that Raymond will write, but it doesn't, it doesn't equate to anything. It's all lip.
It doesn't equate to anything.
No, no, as we know, we know which buildings, you know which buildings need roofs. You, you don't know, you don't know. You don't know. You don't know which buildings need roofs. You don't know which building needs upgrades.
Documented and logged, so we can plan for preventative maintenance and prevent.
Where is your document and log of it?
Okay.
Honestly, where is it?
This, this, so that's the staff. So you're talking about.
The staff.
Okay, the late, trade labor has already been lied to because they've been to meetings where, they've been to meetings where they were told that the buildings were graded, and they, they were told, go see Jim Misaki because he has a list of it. So they did a records request for it. It doesn't exist. So since I've been here, I've been asking to see that, to have that as an important guiding document so that we could know what's up next.
In the past three years, we've done literally millions of dollars in improvements to our assets and our facilities. I don't know what you're thinking that hasn't been done, but we have a lot of things that predate this board, as you mentioned, fifty years ago.
There is, there's no document, and Bill Hart's going to be, the person that you're saying knows everything about this.
Why don't you sit down and talk to Bill Hart about it? I guarantee you, he'll sit down and talk to the press and talk to you about it. And you can delineate all these different things, and you tell us which pot of money we're gonna take it from, and I'll go with you.
Here's the deal.
And you can, you can say the word trade labor as much as you want to, if that, if you think that'll help you.
Okay, the employees, the employees here, like Bill Hart, no one wants to do extra work. Let's just put it that way. So.
It's, it's just, can we move on? This is, this has become just a slanderous.
So he always, he always says he doesn't want to do that. That is, that, we are their supervisors. We don't do what they tell.
He will sit down and talk to you about what needs done.
We know you don't want to talk about it.
Let's have him put it, let's have him put it together so the public could be aware of what, of the expected uh, useful life of the rest of the buildings that the taxpayers.
That's why you have a Maintenance Director. Sit down and talk to him. He's delineated all this.
I would like to see the, the.
She's giving it to us. And, and by the way, the, the over two million dol- excuse me, excuse me.
What he's giving.
Excuse me, over the past three years, and you were a part of it.
Can I see a.
Over three million dollars in improvements to H V A C systems, to roofs, to, to everything to do with our assets.
To qualify that.
And who else didn't?
Jim Misaki said it wasn't eligible, but I actually showed him the treasury guidance.
So you're saying we did it then?
Some of the things, but it was after a lot of them were falling apart. There was, there was, you, you can bring in our lead H V A C person. He sent me the emails who said that these things have been requested to be approved for years, and they kept on getting denied.
You weren't here in those years. You have no idea what the county finances were in those years. You have no idea what other projects were being moved to the front of the line. You have no, you're just, you're just assuming.
Can we see what's in line? What, what's in line?
Go look at what's been done in the past.
Where's the line? Where is it? You said it moved to the.
They're on the agenda.
Where? Where's the?
In past votes.
So let's just say.
Nothing happens without our votes.
And we had meetings last week about the engineers you just brought in us.
So let.
How many more do you want?
What do you mean? What, what, what do you mean you want to see it? They're all on the agenda. No dime gets spent without it being on the agenda.
So if, so it's not about spending to put out fires. It's about proper planning and forethought. And so if these employees are saying.
Going back to that as if people didn't properly plan in the past. You weren't here.
Where's the guiding?
You don't know. You don't know. You're making assumptions again.
No, I, we do know.
You're speaking for boards that haven't been here in ten, twenty years. Uh, it's terrible. It's terrible that you're slandering them.
Okay, so we know that the buildings haven't been graded, and if people are sending in.
They've been internally graded by our Maintenance Director.
Then where's the?
Ask for it.
There. Uh, where?
Have you asked for it? He'll tell you exactly what needs done, and you tell us which pot of money you want to take it from.
There is electrical sheets that he has. I do know that.
Well, that's what I.
That I've asked for and seen, so you can ask too.
I asked him to do that, and the board agreed with me on the electrical because for two years I've been saying that Federal Pacific Stab Block Service Panels are de-rated and they're fire hazards. So finally, the two of you actually realized that that was correct and, and had him to, to, to look at that. So, so.
It's not gonna work.
I.
Cause of you.
No.
It's not gonna be any consensus here. Look, just.
So there is, so what I, what I was saying is if they're sending things in, how do you know what is, what the line is if you haven't even documented them? So rather than having someone send in a request and say, hey, this needs done.
So here's what you do. I'm gonna, I'm gonna fix the problem for you. You come to the workshops, you ask Bill Hart. No, you ask Bill Hart, what's the condition of this? What's, what's the status of this building? When was the last time this roof was put on? Ask those questions. He'll tell you.
Yeah, and he did. He stood up here, and he said that roof hasn't been touched in fifty years.
That's true. Unfortunately, it's true. Where were you in the two and a half years? That's true. Unfortunately, it's true. Where were you in the two and a half years? I didn't see it put on the agenda one time.
Trying to get this graded. So are we voting?
I didn't see it put on the agenda one time.
So are we voting? No.
Did we put a new roof on this building in the two and a half years you've been here? No. It was nothing on the agenda that she wanted a new roof in that building. So it's easy to sit here and play armchair quarterback and point fingers and say that board did it. This guy did it. This person did it. The maintenance director did it. Let's stop with that. Try to get work done instead of playing armchair quarterback.
Rating, no, we're, we're supposed to be administrators and there's such a disgusting lack of administration that we wait until there's fires to be put up instead, and out instead of planning.
You're the one doing it. In two and a half years, you haven't put anything on the agenda about this roof.
This is it right here. This would have prevented it.
By grading it?
Yeah.
By labeling it.
By labeling it? How you gonna pay for it?
A million.
What fund are you gonna take it from?
Seventy year old roof. Boom, you're gonna fix it.
Go, go ahead and.
Goes to show that you have an inept ability to know the finances of this county, unfortunately. You have no idea what fund it's even coming from.
Really? What, what do you mean what fund, what's coming from?
How we're gonna pay for it. It's terrible. You just sit up here and point fingers at people.
Okay, go ahead and continue.
I'm not continuing. I'm done. Everybody in this room is done. It's the same, same song and dance every time.
Okay, we had discussion, so we'll view that as a second. We'll go ahead and call the roll for her motion.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Wait, no, tomorrow.
No, you're gonna tell him how to vote?
I don't think he understood.
I don't even know where we're at right now. We've gotten so off topic of the agenda. No, 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 no. Then I, I vote no.
So you just.
I just went.
Paying attention.
We've gotten so far off topic, I don't even know where we're at anymore.
I asked her to read the motions. You didn't, so you're going. And I started to do it the way I liked it or not. I could clearly see.
Let's stop playing God's stupid games and move on, please.
He didn't know what he was voting on. That's great.
It's because you've taken us so off topic.
Read, read your motion again, Commissioner.
No, it's already been read. You want me to take the roll again?
Yes, please.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
No.
Mr. Malloy.
No.
I would like to make a motion to fund the two roof projects uh, for the engineers building and the, um, and our planning commission out of revenue replacement, which is category three from our ARPA money.
We've already discussed this yesterday.
Absolutely not on that motion.
Absolutely not.
We've already discussed.
Townships. Now you wanna spend whatever we have left on something, it would building trades to get their vote? It's not gonna happen. We're gonna do this responsibly with ARPA money like we discussed yesterday and we're gonna divide the money so that everybody has an equal share. The roofs will get paid for. We talked about it yesterday. You should have been there. It was a pretty good discussion.
The roofs can be paid for out of this.
Again.
We're gonna follow the process that we set up.
This is why.
Throw a motion on here.
Commissioner.
And come up and, and spend money on your own indiscriminately.
This is why this is so redundant. Give me one second, Auditor Yoder, please. This is why this is so redundant. We've discussed all this. We've hashed this out and you come here with these motions that you don't even know we're, we're discussed already. It's, it's wasting everybody's time here.
Already discussed, okay.
It's already discussed.
At what meeting?
Yesterday's meeting. That you're invited to.
The ARPA meeting?
We, who, the.
No, in the public section, public comment section.
We had yesterday, we discussed various options for both of those roofs.
There's an ARPA meeting yesterday. He dismissed everyone and paid for the ARPA.
Uh, no, I said anyone that didn't wanna be here for the rest of me can leave at any time.
Again, it's more gotcha nonsense. We're trying to get things done. That's all.
Okay, so for the second motion to the floor by Ms. Frenchco regarding the roof projects.
I, I'm, I'm interested in hearing what Martha Yoder has to say.
You should have been there yesterday.
Yeah, I listened to, I listened to what she said and you guys.
Wait, wait, you listen to the meeting that's around Robin? That's around Robin discussion.
That's stupid.
No, that's around Robin discussion. You won't take part in the meeting, but you'll listen to them. So that's around Robin discussion. You might as well be in the, you might as well. Excuse me, you listened to the meeting, didn't you?
You are dumb.
You did, you did listen to the meeting? Just so you know, for the record, that's around Robin.
Listening.
The information that was given to you.
Meeting is around Robin.
Yes, it is. So different than going from information to you, to him, to me, it's being relayed to you. If you truly thought those meetings, if you truly thought those, if you truly thought those meetings were illegal, you wouldn't be listening to them because it's around Robin.
List, listening to.
You wouldn't be getting that information because it's given to all three.
Let me explain, around, around Robin meeting, I'm gonna explain this for Mara who lacks the capacity, it seems like, or maybe he just doesn't have.
You can insult me all you want. That's what it is.
Around Robin meeting is where you are gathering, you're talking to, one party is talking to different members which constitute the majority of the board outside of a regular brick, properly noticed meeting for the purpose of obtaining a consensus.
But if you, I will give you, I, I agree with you to a certain extent, but if you read the strictest rules that, and I will give you the prosecutor's opinion about Ron Robin rules. It could be just listening to something that two other, or one other commissioners or, and actually you've, you've actually turned down meetings with developers. You've actually turned down meetings with developers because they've talked to me first and Danny first and you said, no, that's around Robin if I hear it. It's no different than the meetings.
The, the, did you say that yours was public? So you're basically acknowledging.
If you're, no, if you're saying that those meetings are not, are deemed illegal, then you listening to them is around Robin.
Oh, okay. None of that makes.
No, if you're saying that our meetings are illegal, which you're alleging, which you're alleging, then you listening to those meetings and obtaining the information is no different than you being here.
Forward because I don't think he gets it.
We don't live in your world, Nikki. Nobody gets.
It's terrible. It's terrible. It's rules for thee, but not for me.
Hey, do you have a motion on the floor?
The clerk would be, you're the president, you should know.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to fund both of those roofs out of ARPA funds.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
I'd like to hear what the auditor has to say before we discuss this.
We, what did you, before you discuss it?
Before we vote on it.
The auditor has nothing to do with what.
We discussed it yesterday so she can enlighten you.
Uh, enlighten me?
Yes.
About what?
Please let her have the floor, please.
County Auditor Martha Yoder. Um, yes, we've discussed these roof projects several times at the public meetings, at the workshops. And I have let folks know at those workshops, let the two commissioners know that because these are capital projects, they are eligible for borrowing and we are prepared to take a note on these, just like we've done for the elevator, take it, take, go out for a note on these projects. When it, when we get to that point, we have to have for those projects. Before we can ever do that, we have to have much clearer numbers on them before we can go out for a note. So that process has been started with what ha- with, uh, what's gonna be voted, I think, on today for the RF, it's for, uh, the advertising for the RFQs, but we're, we're early in the process. But these are just like, and, and, um, as I've noted a couple of times within, uh, some of these packets, we are, are, we're at a good place as far as borrowing goes, as far as how much we have, how much debt we have.
And by the way, I don't mean to interrupt, but by the way, you keep maligning other boards or other auditors or people that came before you. The reason why we're in this position to borrow this money is because we have A, little debt and because B, our borrowing power is very strong. And because we've kept everything so low and watched the finances. That's why the, we're in this position.
Carezak, that's because Carezak money and ARPA money saves the counties behind.
That's not true. We have very little debt. We have, we have over two hundred million in savings.
Go into debt.
We, we had an awesome Trumbull County investment meeting last.
That you didn't go to. You don't even know what we have.
And I'm not on that committee, but I did review the minutes from the last, uh, like for the last couple of meetings and I noticed that she's never there.
Never. Not at planning commission meetings either. But yet she's gonna praise a planning commission employee that she's hiring, but she'll never go to the meeting. You figure it out.
Planning commission employee? Do you even know what your agenda items are? What planning commission employee?
Let's move on.
Yeah, that's because there was no planning commission.
We hired somebody in planning commission. I forgot you weren't there.
No, that's right. You weren't at the planning commission meeting yesterday. We did hire someone in your absence. And in fact, you haven't been there since September of twenty one.
Since September of twenty one, the pla- the major economic development engine of the county, excuse me, the major economic development engine that runs this county and plans economic development for Trumbull County, she hasn't been there since twenty twenty one. Not been to a meeting.
That's not correct. I had someone there in place with me.
You had someone there in four months. You had a liaison to attend and take notes for you and then he's not there anymore.
That works, okay. Yeah, yeah, not arguing with.
So he, and he was there for a short timeframe, December, I believe, until.
Till yeah.
Till June. And then last two months, nobody's been there representing it. And your seat has been empty.
Was the, was, did it come back that that was asbestos in the building or not? Were the, when the ceiling collapsed, did those, did those reports come back yet?
Did you ask maintenance?
I, I imagine that they would let us all know, but they don't usually communicate with me.
There's a reason for that.
Yeah, cuz they're not required to and they're told not to.
No, cuz you slander and defame them publicly.
Thanks. So for the second motion made by Ms. Frenchco to fund the two roof projects with ARPA monies. Ms. Frenchco?
Yeah.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Auditor Yoder. At the end of the day, are we using ARPA money or are we gonna borrow the money?
You're asking her to make your.
I'm asking her what is more financially prudent. She is the auditor.
It's the decision for the board. It's.
We get advised by the auditor.
You get advised by the auditor?
You should sit.
Note of that.
If you're not talking to the auditor and having discussions with them, there's a problem with you. They are the chief financial officer of the county.
Do have a pause on ARPA money that we're just gonna ignore? We, we have more stuff coming up on ARPA and we're just gonna ignore everything we talked about yesterday. We can't make that decision at this time.
The chief financial officer of the county and you're saying we shouldn't talk to him.
Financial officer.
Yes, she is. The CFO of the county.
She's, okay. Our, our, our decisions and our budget and all of these things that you have traditionally given to the auditor because you.
Again, you're slandering and trying to spin things. I have discussed with the auditor. I have discussed with the auditor. And we come to consensus together. That's how you work with people. That's how you, that's how this works.
What your duty is because for the years you've been here, you have, you've not done the budget. You've said that you're not a numbers person and that's why you just.
Who said that?
You did.
I did, I never said that. Please stop lying and putting words in people's mouths.
I'm just gonna outline what I recommend and, and why I recommend it. So when we discuss the ARPA money and moving certain things over into the revenue loss category, some of those things are not capital projects. And so would be harder to borrow on and not, not.
Things for.
Not prudent to borrow.
Or has.
But I just wanna explain that.
I know you just wanna, you just wanna, you don't.
No.
Our auditor has the floor. Please show her respect.
She just alerted and you as a commissioner have been here for years and I'm probably, I'm probably, again, and I'm probably the only one who actually read the treasury guidance and understands the categories and.
What are you talking about?
The only one.
I heard you, I heard you.
It is just a mess.
Asking, you're asking the auditor about the categories.
I'm not asking you about the category. Here's my point. If we borrow it, will it take too much time?
No, yesterday you were asking.
Can you please let me speak?
Understand it.
Jeez, oh man.
My time, both of you would just.
I don't know how you, I don't know how you can function. Can I ask a question?
So, so one of the things that came up, uh, yes.
Time is of the essence here. If we borrow the money, it might take more time than taking it out of ARPA is my question.
That, that is, that's partially correct. However, we have more steps to follow in getting ready for those two projects. And so that allows us time to prepare to borrow that money.
Okay.
And we've already started on, on some of the preliminary parts of that. So, so it's not gonna make a diff- there's not gonna be a difference in time, okay? With the, the roof project on the planning commission is different. The engineering is already done. We're already moving. That's why putting that and that's, you know, we have some preliminary that that's probably gonna be fine to put it in that category.
Preliminary that is probably gonna be fine.
We've talked to Tanya, but we don't have it written.
So why, this is my question then. Why is the board of commissioners asking the auditor to find out what we could spend money on? That is our.
We're not asking what to spend money on.
No, how?
I'm asking about timeframes and what is more feasible.
It is eligible under cap.
I understand it is.
No, you don't because you.
I did not say that.
Getting back to your, your question as to what.
Under, under revenue.
I, I give up.
Which is why we took, we took ten million dollars and we're allowed to use that for revenue replacement and.
Why are we paying an attorney? I know it already. Why are we paying an attorney two hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Because, because we took the ten million dollars out and that is an, a county owned building and that is normally what the county would be doing is fixing those things. It's not a roof or a township that made an application for one. It is a roof that we own. It is eligible under revenue.
Saying the same thing. What I'm asking is, what's more expedient? What's more expedient? To borrow the money or to get it from ARP funding?
Right.
These, these buildings need, these roofs need replaced.
Sure. The money is already here, so it would obviously be more expedient.
Not necessarily.
Don't know that. You're not the auditor.
There are things that have to be done. The RFQ, that process takes time. So during that time, we can be working on, on the, on our end of the bar, which we've actually already started a little bit.
Please stop harassing. Please stop harassing.
Shame, Mara.
What's a shame is you're trying to twist everything that everybody's saying in this county. And it's sad. It is sad. Nothing is getting.
Desperate. It's very desperate.
It's desperate and it's political and it's sad. I hope everybody sees it. We're trying to do the best thing for Trumbull County. We're trying to move things forward. And you are the, you are the fly in the ointment on everything, unfortunately. There's no progress, there's process.
Who'd have taken advice that I suggested years ago, Mara, which included sitting down and going over all the applications and looking after.
You won't even sit down for a workshop. You won't even sit down for a planning commission meeting. You won't even sit down for investment meetings.
That's political. Okay, so after.
Health Department meeting.
Okay, after the buildings are, after the buildings are graded, then that's whenever you look and you say, okay, these are all of our needs and this is the amount that we need to keep and reserve out of the ARPA money so that we can do the things that we've never had the money to do before.
That's what we're doing.
But yeah, you're, you're saying that you're doing this, but this is something that I suggest the doing in twenty twenty one by putting together a panel. I, I, this was all public records and it's all.
Think you got a panel to spend the money?
I talked about making sure that we had preventative maintenance included categorically and, uh, there, no one wanted to make a, a full plan.
I got, I got a news flash for you. We've, we've spent over four million dollars in ARPA money on our assets and we're gonna spend a whole lot more. Because that's what it's there for.
And we're following due process.
And you vote for it. So.
Okay.
There's a, there's a, let's, let's get back to the vote. She has an amendment on the floor to use ARPA money and I, I think it's ridiculous.
Let's just move on.
Let's take the vote, take the roll.
She already took mine.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Wanted confirmation from someone else before you would vote.
Mr. Malloy.
No, absolutely not.
What do I do? What do I do?
Item number thirteen, to rescind journal action dated August second, twenty twenty three, Journal Volume one fifty six, page two five eight eight six. Authorizing Danny Malloy, President of the Board, to execute the twenty twenty five Ohio Department of Transportation Office authorizing resolution for the Ohio Department of Transportation, twenty twenty five fifty three ten grant application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number fourteen is to authorize the clerk of the Board of Commissioners to execute the twenty twenty five Ohio Department of Transportation Office authorizing resolution for the Ohio Department of Transportation, twenty twenty five fifty three ten grant application.
Motion to approve. Second.
Um, discussion, I just wanna make sure that everyone knows thirteen and fourteen are because the clerk had, well, Denny signed. Where the clerk should have, instead of certifying, um, his signature, they didn't read the form. So, okay.
Item number fifteen, to authorize the engineering firm of.
Take the roll.
Yes, she did. Fourteen, no?
No, she didn't.
Okay.
That's like the second.
Mister, Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to authorize the engineering firm of Burgess and Niple, Inc. To provide the technical services listed below with regard to the blueprint phase two water improvements project two dash W dash nineteen located in Braceville and Southington Townships. And to enter into an engineering agreement with Burgess and Niple for said professional services in an amount not to exceed four hundred thirty four thousand five hundred and forty dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to accept and award the proposal for professional services as, as submitted by Sexton and Associates Architects, Inc. To provide technical specifications for the Trumbull County Stone Building Repair and Upgrade in the amount, in the amount not to exceed five hundred dollars. And to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board, to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate this agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to accept an award, the proposal for professional services as submitted by Sexton and Associates.
So did we?
Architects, Inc.
Did we skip one?
No.
Okay.
Sixteen to seventeen.
No, there is, I, I'm on my yesterday's agenda, which that hasn't been reprinted for me. There is number sixteen.
We just voted on sixteen.
No, sixteen said to concur with the Trumbull County Senior Services Advisory.
Yeah, that was, that was pulled as they rego and, uh, look at the, read, look at the funds for Gerard. We had a discussion yesterday that Gerard was getting cut thirty five percent on their multi-generational center out of the senior levy funds and Commissioner Cantala Mesa. And myself, uh, wanted them to go back and look to give Gerard more money. We thought that they were being slighted in the process.
Okay, so the, there is a Senior Services Advisory Council that I used to serve on and they spend days going over all of the applications and the financing and they make those decisions based on certain things. And it's disappointing that the board wouldn't, uh, take their advice.
So you want to rubber stamp it?
These, no, I, I, that's not, that's not what I said. I reviewed every person's ranking, uh, related to that. And the reason why that they were giving them less money is because they spent less money. So they gave them, they awarded them the amount that they spent, if not more than what they spent. So.
This isn't on the agenda.
So when someone actually, it, it is on my agenda and it's unfortunate that the clerk didn't give me a copy of the new one. If the, if it's not on yours, then it's on mine.
Have a copy of it.
This is all I have from yesterday.
That's one in your office under your door.
There's a whole stack of them right here.
No, you got it.
Okay, so if, if the agenda, first I want to say at the, this is it, at the agenda.
There it is.
This is, no, this is the one that I've been using. If the agenda changes, and this is what I had Paula do, put the new one on, on the day of.
I'm not Paula. I gave it to you.
When did you?
I gave all three of you agendas this morning along with this packet from Auditor Yoder.
It was sitting right here.
Okay, so this has been, so if it's changed, you have, you at least do us the courtesy of letting us know what's been changed because it's still.
You just walked in there when the.
Yeah, when you walk in.
I was already, I was already the pledge of allegiance when you walked in. Come in early if you want the stuff.
So as I was saying, that there, there is a Senior Services Advisory Council and they're comprised of eleven people who spend a lot of time and dedication.
This isn't on the agenda. What's your statement?
I don't understand.
If you want to bring this up in the comments after the regular agenda, you're more than welcome to. But this is not on the agenda right now.
Reason why it was decreased was because there were, they didn't spend the money. So that's how grants work. If they see that you left money on the table because you didn't spend it, the next go around, that's what you get. And so for you to.
Then why did everyone else get more money?
For you to change that, then it's based on.
Nothing has changed. They're looking at it and reworking it. We're not voting on it today.
Told is that they are changing it.
You were told by who?
By Diane, that you guys are changing it to give them more money at your directive rather than going with the recommendation, which I read and thought was very thought out.
Okay, but it's not on the agenda today.
Everybody else got more money and Gerard got cut thirty five percent. We had people from Gerard here.
I know.
We had people on their board here, residents of Gerard, asking why they were cut thirty five percent.
They didn't spend the money. It's a very simple question.
It's not. It's, it's a matter of the accounting, their tally of the time and the workers that are there and the people that show up there. They've got people of all ages there, not just seniors. And when they cut some of the things, they have open gym. There was a great discussion, a, a great, great explanation from the lady that runs the center. With two people to back up. I listen to the people Gerard and that's why we're making the change.
Services of. Tax levy money can only be used for the object of the levy. That's according to the revised code. So if you're talking about the other services provided because it's multi-generation.
Not. I'm talking about the way they accounted for things. There's a little more difficult because they have all age groups there.
And they didn't spend the sixty thousand.
They did spend it.
They only, yeah, they only spent sixty one thousand, I believe, last year.
Commissioner, if you're going to listen to the meetings, just come to the meetings. That'd be very simple. If you want to hear what goes on there, come.
And participate.
You're already round robbing it. You're already hearing it.
I'm not, I didn't mean listening. Okay.
Yeah.
We can't be stupid.
I'll give you the, I'll give you the prosecutor's opinion on that as well. Now, you might need a copy of it too, Commissioner.
Every other, every other center got raises. They got a thirty five percent decrease. They didn't even, it makes no sense. You're saying they, they got what they spent. Everyone else got more than they spent. Is that fair for the citizens in Gerard?
It's based on the years.
How many times have you been?
Based on the years, there's new centers that haven't even been doing, that haven't even been in business yet. There's new centers that haven't even been in business yet that are getting awarded more than Gerard.
Because of the need. Okay.
Because of the need, they, they have no background to go on. They're new centers.
Some communities like Newton Falls where they actually have, um, volunteers coming in and donating and preparing food and for their center. So like, yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of.
But you just said, you just, you just said it's based on prior years. You said it's based on prior years and what they've spent. What about these new centers that haven't spent a dime yet?
Because they've existed in prior years and you know what, it's just the same with any other program. If you know.
This is one of our first senior centers.
How government administration works and grants and it's just, I, I.
You know, you know, you know, Commissioner.
Yes, I did.
You know.
It went from ninety thousand, eighty nine, ninety one, ninety nine, ninety eight, seventy one, sixty one. Why the trend down all of a sudden when they're not going down users? It made no sense.
They're not.
We'll have a workshop next Tuesday. We'll see what she came up with.
She's. And she said that she was not allowed to submit her recommendation and the board's recommendation or the council's recommendation because you guys wanted it to be done that way. And so that's what she's going to do, exactly what you guys want.
I didn't hear that. I didn't hear her say. We listened to both parties yesterday.
She, then talk to her then. Call, call her up and, and ask, go to the, go to the Senior Services Advisory Council.
Kind of like you should call the courts.
No, go to their meeting. They actually have a public meeting. We, we appoint them. You're permitted to go and you can go to their properly run Senior Services Advisory Council.
That'll be, I'll go to the next Senior Services meeting. You go to the next planning commission meeting.
Face and tell them that, you know, thanks, but no thanks. We.
Laugh them all in the face. They're an advisory committee. The ultimate decision lies with the Board of Commissioners. We have the right to, to change whatever we want on that.
Okay.
We take, usually we take the recommendations. And by the way, in the past, when we took the recommendations, you said that was wrong. You said we were rubber stamping it. Now we don't take the recommendations. We're wrong.
I looked at it. I, I, I'm sorry. I, I came from serving on that council and I understand it intimately.
I know you do. I know you do.
I'm sure they miss it. Number seventeen.
To accept and award the proposal for professional services as submitted by Sexton and Associate Architects, Inc. To provide the technical spec, specifications for the Trumbull County Highway Engineers Garage Project in the amount not to exceed five hundred dollars and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board, to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate this agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eighteen is a routine liquor permit and it's a new class C permit for Bizetta Mall LLC in Bizetta Township.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to authorize the Board of Commissioners to join with the Trumbull County Prosecuting Attorney to file an application with the Court of Common Pleas for the appointment of Attorney Jeffrey V. Goodman as legal counsel for the Board of Commissioners of Trumbull County and the Trumbull County Engineer Randy L. Smith in connection with the recovery of money from former employees of the engineer's office who received CDL training at county expense and left county employment prior to fulfilling their two-year obligation. And just within the note, Attorney Goodman is also an employee, an employee of the engineer and his representation will be undertaken at no additional cost to Trumbull County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Hey, that conducts our regularly scheduled business for the agenda idols. Uh, at this time.
Well.
Want to entertain any comments?
I wanted, I wanted to talk about, uh, the ARPA situation. I'd actually. I think it's extremely important for us to look collectively at, at all of the applications that we have left. And make those, make decisions at one time rather than sending them in one at a time.
Apparently listened to the meeting yesterday because that's exactly what I said.
Because someone gives, uh.
And invited you to come to the meeting and be a part of this.
Because someone comes in and gives a beautiful presentation because that's been going on since you started. Well, it was a beautiful presentation, so we're going to vote yes on it. And I think that what we need to do is look at the beneficiaries and the impact of the project before we do that. This is what should have done at the beginning. This is what I proposed at the beginning. I'm glad that you're finally start, um.
I've been doing it since day one.
No.
I, I voted on less than two million dollars with the projects. You guys spent twenty eight million before I got here and I, I've done that ever since day one.
You haven't. You, you, as soon as someone comes in, the tourism, the people from Mesbo, whatever, you're like, okay, give it to them. It was a beautiful presentation. Give it to them. We actually have to look at the remaining funds to altogether in totality and determine what's going to have the greatest impact. One of the things that I think is extremely important is the broadband and the, they're waiting for a small amount of money from us right now for the initial part and the second part. Um, after speaking with, um, communicating with, um, Steve Kristin, I think we need to look and determine what, because I don't think there's going to be enough money to do what was originally planned to do.
That's exactly what Commissioner Cantal Mesa said in paper today.
For the broadband, uh, if we can look at the communities to identify the ones that have the most impact. That would be e- extremely beneficial. We can spend that and I, I heard your question and I'll answer it for you. Broadband is infrastructure. You don't have to ask the auditor that. This is for the commissioners. We're supposed to know that, read the treasury guidance and understand those categories. So category four is for infrastructure and it's not just water and sewer. It includes, it includes broadband. So I'd like to make sure that that's something that we take, that we actually do collectively and identify the final projects at one time so that we're, and I've also disagreed with sending every single application for a legal opinion when you know that you're not going to consider it. Know that, knowing that we're now to the bottom of the bear, the barrel relative to what the funding's, funding is.
We got a third.
Situation, the, yes, it's the end of it. So we need to look at those totally. Um, before we start moving money from, from revenue, I'm sorry, from revenue replacement. Um, we need to, because it's really difficult to, to qualify projects, which is why getting the most revenue replacement is important.
So are you backing off your, your seven million dollar pledges of townships?
So now that.
Sounds like it. Are you backing off of that?
So now that we know what's there and we, and, and I want the board to clearly understand how difficult it is to spend the money on, on, uh, maintenance if it's not in that category. So since we have, that's the area where there's the most money. Let's not make any more decisions until we look at everything and we've identified the project. So let's not, I, I'm saying we, we should not be moving money from the revenue replacement over to anywhere else.
We're not doing that.
Look at all of the projects first.
We're not doing that.
Okay, and.
Point was that discussed or are we saying that?
And that does impact the township. So making sure, the other, and the other thing is, is, um, looking at where we've already spent money is important. So what I'd like to propose is that, um, because I've been trying to get, I've been trying to get staff to put something together that I've requested for, you know, since winter a, and, uh, I actually want to ask the board if they can, because I, I can't get staff to really do anything that I.
What are you doing?
Ask them to do. I, I have something that I'd like for them to prepare. I started a spreadsheet uh, a while ago and it has, uh, a lot of information on it and all it is is to fill out the blanks. So now that I have it started, I'd like to give this to our staff, not the, not the, uh, auditor's office staff, though they might have the information because the county has not followed the segregation of duties matter correctly.
This was prepared mostly by our staff and I think it's perfect.
Okay, so I have more information that I'd like to gather so that we could make a, a better informed decisions. And then with what I'm looking for, we can actually identify which communities have had, uh, service or have had benefited from the ARPA already and.
Again, this was talked about yesterday ad nauseam. We talked about this for two hours, Commissioner. We talked about an overlapping map like you're talking about and looking at areas that haven't been serviced already by ARPA money, whether it be through water and sewer or broadband or whatever.
Okay.
We've discussed this.
Okay.
It's like, it's like Groundhog Day all over again. You're bringing up things that we already discussed.
And now you get your idea.
I've been asking.
Already been quoting in the paper.
Yeah, I've been asking for this for.
Did we not discuss this? Thank you.
So this is what, this is what I started before and then I edited it. And, um, the only other thing and, uh, was the unencumbered amounts per category, which was, which was brought up. But that, that should be separate and the rest of the, I'd like to, I'd like to give, who in our staff would be, would be responsible for putting this together?
I'm not going to have anyone's staff do that. I think. We have another one coming next Tuesday for Mr. Masaki with the pending grants that are out there. And we have more than enough information to make.
Sarah from our, Sarah from our office is working with the auditor's office and Mr. Masaki on exactly what you're doing.
No, it's not exactly, but and I.
Okay, well then you can keep yours and we'll, we'll work with the auditor and the other commissioners in an open meeting.
Okay, I'm giving this to then Sarah. You said she'll be the one to put this together?
No, Sarah, she has one.
Surely has.
Your.
Give her, give her a copy of what we already put together. Audit, did you already give her? Okay.
Yeah, I have what they have, but it's not everything that I asked for and it's not your responsibility to do it and I thank you for it. But I, what I'd like to see is our staff doing what our staff should be doing and that is, um, helping to inform, helping to put together a a table or a spreadsheet so that the commissioner's decisions can be better informed as to spending the remaining ARPA funds.
So you want to go back to scratch. You're, you're removing your commitment for half the money to the townships at this time.
And you. Seven million dollars on record that you said you had to give the townships.
That's absolutely not what I said. What I said is I want to look at everything.
It sure is.
And if we don't have it done this way, we're not going to be, we, we'll be able to look at a cursory glance. We could sort by, um, by benefited area and we can see who actually was the recipient of some ARPA funds already. And I already had that.
We already discussed this and we were already talking about an overlapping map.
Allocated, what's spent and what's on a BO. We have it.
Okay, so this, this basically says amount, date received request, amount of the request, revenue loss, opinion letter, ARPA category topic. See, that's, that's what, what is here. Now, what I'm asking for is a bit more because it includes, uh, a lot of these, a lot of these are overlapping, but it also includes, uh, the project status. Uh, it includes the, uh, project amount, appropriate amount, encumbered amount, expenditures and the benefited area. I think that if we added that benefited area and here's, here's what I have together and all it is is to fill in the blanks for staff and if the, and it's disappointing to the, to, I think the taxpayer after the debacle, uh, that the Board of Commissioners won't actually finally assign staff, uh, to fill this out when I got it started for them.
I think that's just a whole lot of nonsense. I really do. I think that everything you said there, everything, no, everything you said there is already, is already in that.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. What part isn't?
I just said the benef, I just read it.
The benefited area? You really need to have the benefited area in there? Here, let, let me see. I'll, I'll tell you what the benefited area is. Maplewood Sewer Study. Guess what? Do we know where the benefited area is there? Or do you need to say that on here? If you don't know where Maplewood School is, then you shouldn't be Commissioner.
Okay, so what I'm saying is in order to be able to also provide feedback to the community to have this in one place, we can actually, someone, someone.
We said that. And we're doing an overlapping map with Gary with the infrastructure projects that we've already completed in the townships so that we can see, oh, we already did two projects in Newton Falls. We don't need to allocate any more, more, more money there. That's what we're working on.
All along and, and, and I have the original request from the date that I requested that this be put together and it never was. So I started to, to do it and I actually added on to it. And now I'm asking that it be completed so that we can actually have it easily accessible by the public. So they can see, you know, what the money did for them.
Chairman, can we?
Yes. And that's top of ma'am. You've been waiting patiently.
She had a case that wore on higher. Uh, I have the transit numbers which I can be your boss.
Thank you. Thank you.
I apologize that print's so tiny I didn't realize it.
Well, that is time.
Thank you. And um. Just to let you know, well, you can see the increases in it that right now, this is just fixed routes. Uh WRTA is waiting for a new grant from the state of Ohio. But there. They expected it six weeks ago, an answer on it. And it's not here yet. If the grant is turned down, the fixed route, the Warren Express will still exist, but the other routes will be gone next month. So. Just to let you know that.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kathy Jones and um I work closely with Bishop David Heron. I'm a community liaison for the Community Family Outreach Complex. And um my profession, I'm a retired speech pathologist from Warren City Schools. Um and currently do contract work with um hospitals and nursing homes. But I um submitted a grant, ARPA grant last September um. Commissioner Frank is very interested in using our community center as a hub for the County Health Department. Um we have AccuDose Pharmacy interested um and collaborating with us. So uh with the help of Valerie Col- Colgar, we were so fortunate. She uh worked for the CDC for over thirty years and has done hundreds of grants. Um she was just crucial in helping us complete this grant. Um we had some verbal indications that we might get a piece of the pie with the ARPA. I was a little alarmed a couple of weeks ago when I saw that the original amount of funding is not what it was supposed to be. Um we were just curious as to how the process is. Um I understand that you guys are looking at that. Um when we can expect some allocations, what the process is um and just. Wanted to get a little bit more information in regards to that.
So um, Mr. Chairman, if I can, um I will say this, that what. When we received your project, I I thought it was one of the most worthwhile projects out there because uh when you talk about equity inclusion and you talk about. Um the public health crisis and potential public health crises that are that that could be looming. Um and and having uh that facility, we we saw the inequities there uh when when it came to um. Certain areas of the city and certain areas of the county. This would help address that um. Uh and and I think it's a wonderful partnership between uh Bishop Heron and um our health department. I think it could be very beneficial to the people in Warren and um I think it's something especially with us. With the with our Trumbull County Health Department, um you know, potentially moving and and looking at Cortland. Uh this gives us uh you know, sort of gives a Warren City more than us a satellite office where they can do a lot of these different things and.
Those are two different things. The Warren City has their own health department.
Of course.
This is in the county.
But I'm just telling you that there's a lot of Warren residents that go to the Trumbull Health Department that are confused and then are sent over to Warren and there's a lot of different.
Gonna be even more confusing.
So so um so I I think definitely it's it's a great idea and it's a great use of that facility and it's something that I'm gonna support down the line. I know that.
Right and right now, just the process, as we discussed in our meeting yesterday, we do have a pa- a pause on ARP. Uh funding um and I and that brings me something I wanted to bring up too. I'm gonna do a motion from the floor. That we accept ARPA applications in the portal until September fifteenth. Uh for round one of the ARPA funding. After that time, uh we can read, we can get together. Um. Spend what we have here, allocate the funds as Commissioner Frenchco asked, as I did, as Commissioner Cannon Lace asked. And then if we have remaining funds after that, we can reopen the portal to date after that. But at this time, I just wanna make a motion that we accept ARP applications for Trumbull County through the portal until September fifteenth.
I'll second it.
Mr. Malloy.
Well, I appreciate that. Um I just, I think it's kind of discourteous to do that while there are people waiting.
Well, I'm I'm giving her part of the process as she can understand the process too.
So just so we're clear, well, just so we're clear, what we're saying is basically that the amount of applications that we're receiving and have received. Are starting to obviously inundate the county. We need to put a cutoff date on some of the stuff and that's all we're saying with this is September fifteenth now is the cutoff date. And we're giving everybody ample time to get their applications and any remaining applications. Doesn't necessarily.
Yes, so let me just go back to the meeting that we had here in this room with all the applications. I I did say that we could need to have a cutoff date and you and you disagreed, but thank you for recognizing the need for that now. It would be beneficial to the county if you would realize the need for the things that I'm trying to suggest when I suggest them and so waiting so long. But um I'm glad that you finally do recognize.
Your initial date would have been way beyond September fifteenth of this year.
That wasn't. So my uh my question is um you mentioned Commissioner Frank, you're not talking about. The health department. Okay.
We've we've collaborated with him since twenty twenty. Um Community Family Outreach Complex has been a hub for vaccines um with um. COVID nineteen, we had. People in the community that didn't go to the county, they didn't go to CBS, but because this was a safe, familiar place. We received the overwhelming amount of people in Trumbull County and Warren City that came for our services.
Was it out of church?
Um we have a large community center behind our church.
You should, you should visit it. It's amazing.
It's it's church owned property.
It's a separate entity.
Okay, that's what I wanna look, you know, I wanna better understand that dynamic. And then the do you have statistics on who the beneficiaries were during that timeframe?
We we had two big presentations from Bishop Heron, including at one of the ARPA meetings. And he stood right there with this, just saying.
And it's in his application that he's.
Same thing. And it is in the application. If you read it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
For some motion.
Okay, the motion on the floor.
Where we at on that?
September fifteenth.
September fifteenth, yes, yes.
And then we were interrupted.
Okay, then we'll take the roll or?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Okay, so we ask everybody. September fifteenth, that's gonna be our deadline. After that time, I would ask the board or I will address at that time, we set a meeting. With the Board of Commissioners to review all. That are in the portal. We separate by category, we separate by type, we we categorize them, we see the money at that date that we have available. And then we start laying the groundwork for how we're gonna separate the money in as fair of a way possible. Uh so that as much of the pie uh is utilized instead of once one corner, one area. Um. I still wanna make my commitment to the townships. I'll double down on that, that half of what we have left, I think, there are townships, small municipalities. Villages. Half of whatever we have at that time, at that date. And that's what we did before. We would, when we thought was fifteen, you said seven, I said seven, five. Now we know there's over ten. I don't wanna make a dollar amount, but half of whatever we have, I'd like to earmark to make sure that those. Get equitably done. And I think with the with the grant apps we have in now. From the townships, villages and those areas. We should have more than enough money out of that half to be able to fund everything we have as of now. As more come in, that'll dilute a little bit, but they're having a few.
We have an outstanding applications.
I have the stack of my office. I separated in my office.
What's the total?
Right now, we're at about four and a half million dollars of what's requested.
What's requested?
From the townships, yes.
No.
But there are two that were denied already, so we gotta remove those from it.
Talking about until, that's why this.
I'm just talking about the township stuff is the tally that I looked at. There's about twenty million requested total.
That's why I think that it would be important to have.
That's the spreadsheet that we're getting on Tuesday. That's what we asked for yesterday's public meeting. That's the one that Mr. Masaki is working on now. With Shara to give us on Tuesday.
Okay. So um.
What we have now is what's spent and what's allocated. The one we're getting is what is still out there from the portal. Um that has not been addressed yet.
And and one place I think it would be wonderful because you you the portal. Includes applications and you don't realize how much is out there with outstanding applications that haven't been logged. Because that's not how the county has been doing it, because there's been a.
That's what this next spreadsheet is gonna be on Tuesday.
Okay, well, I'd like to include these things and uh. I I also have to again address the fact that we have another office doing our work. There's there's a.
Now, we have Mr. Masaki, who was, I believe, you guys assigned to be in charge of ARP A.
We.
Who does work for the auditor's office and we have Shara Taylor that works for us doing.
Record.
And we have the auditor generously donating her time to come in and oversee this process with her employee for the good of the county.
Commissioners assigned work to the. Okay, so that you're saying that the commissioners are assigning and designating work for the auditor's office. Okay.
No, no. Graciously said, yes, Mr. Masaki, and I can do that.
Understand that that's that that's not okay.
What?
He has a job description by the auditor's office.
Job description.
The auditor can give, can, no. The auditor's.
The board was there with him yesterday when we came up with this.
He's working for the auditor's office. The auditors, at the end of the line, at the end of the day, the auditor is responsible for this ARP more money. More than the commissioners, believe it or not, because they are the CFO of the county. So it would behoove us to have the auditor and their staff assist with this.
Okay.
I wanna make sure that we can go ahead and put that on the website.
I'm good with it.
I would say yes, that's the deadline. That's what we want Ray to publish.
Yes.
That's what we.
We can get the word out there. That's what we want.
They're gonna tell them what the rights.
And we will notify Township Association also and any other entities we can think of.
This word of mouth.
Anybody else in the room for the greater good of Trumbull County?
Things that I wanted to ask about, because I wasn't um able.
Can you please turn this heater off? This is ridiculous. This is, you've had heat on me. It is on high and it's been on me since we started.
I don't wanna touch you, but my hands are ice cold because that's fifty five degree air coming down, so.
No, it isn't. There's no air coming down.
It's moving because that's fifty, it's it is, so that's how this works.
There's insulation up there. They've put more insulation up.
But they are not able to, that damper.
There is a flow of air around the room from the other vents.
Anyway, um anyway, I'm sorry, just. I wanted to find out about last week, there there is uh and I've tried to bring it up before about how the county was getting sued for that contract. Because it was a modification instead of an actual change order and we didn't pay. What are, is the county just going to pay that?
That was a, that was a. Uh.
That was discussed in executive session.
Deal that we are dealing with pending with the lawyers and that's where it'll be addressed as an executive session, not right here. That's the reason we had executive session.
Okay, so the reason why that.
It's a pending legal matter. Uh that that I can tell you has been rectified already, but it is a pending legal matter. It has been.
But what I wanted to say is that 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 matter uh that wouldn't have occurred had the board. Required prosecutor's approval uh before those change orders come over, because then they catch them after the fact.
Doesn't matter.
Let's not talk about, let's not talk about pending litigation.
But you will see in the end that we did not.
Okay.
Ask for a change order, we did not authorize a change order and Mr. Newbrow did exactly what he's supposed to do. Uh by not doing something without.
Much to your dismay, Commissioner. Everything was, this was unavoidable.
See the outcome is.
Okay, so uh.
So you're trying to throw employees under the bus and you were.
Stuff they didn't do.
They did the right job here. They did exactly as the policy procedure says. They did not violate anything. You should be commending them.
Can we share the um prosecutor's opinions publicly then?
Uh when the prosecutor brings.
I would, I would, first of all, you you're not even up to speed on what was discussed in executive session. So I suggest, I suggest, I suggest.
Right.
I suggest you talk to Bill Danzo.
Sure, the old one that we just got that shows, you guys, since you're saying it.
That was, that was brought up in executive session last week.
Ending.
And I'm not waving.
I don't know what you're, you don't understand about pending litigation and.
That you guys did everything correctly and would you waive privilege?
This is a matter of pending litigation. We're in the process of negotiating. I suggest you talk to Bill Danzo before you jeopardize the county more than you already have.
And I think you will see something next week that will be public information at that time. At this time, it's not. And and I'm not gonna talk about it anymore.
Okay, I also have some concerns about uh about the standard uh operating procedures that that were supposed to be developed by every. Department and I would like to see the updates on those because I don't know that anything has been done. Uh I know for certain within our office, um the assistant clerk said while she was training the new young. The the new ladies that there's two of them, one of them is still here, one of them quit. But she was going to be working with them and then I said to, that's a good time to start developing the training manual. When you're training someone and I I'd like to see an update on that because I I suspect that it didn't occur. Um additionally, I think it's important that we have that and all departments, because I did request to find out from Gary Newbrow. What the policies say related to verifying that the property owners on the interest surveys. Are actually the proper, are are the signers on the prop, on the interest survey are actually actually property owners. Because we had a situation with that uh with the Elm Road project. Where one of the signers was not the owner of the property.
And he did vote and I have that same question. He should not be allowed to vote if he is not able to sign. If he's not the property owner, his vote should be negated also.
So if he's not able to vote, in reality, you take it a few steps back, his his signature should not have counted for the petition.
But we don't need the petition by law. Gary stated that we don't even need to do the petition. That's a courtesy.
In order to charge them. So if you, if they were to do that and not follow the proper procedures, then the county would be responsible for all of that. And I think that it's beneficial for the county to recognize that before something happens legally that puts us on the hook. For for uh. Of connections or liabilities because the process wasn't done correctly.
I thought, I thought you were about extending infrastructure to the townships. And now you're trying to stop water from going to Bezetta? I mean, you're trying to, you're trying to stop. I don't get it. You can't be on both sides.
Okay, let me explain what happened then. So there is a.
Rub your head and think about it and give me an explanation.
Okay, so in twenty twelve, there was a project that was proposed and that project. Felt failed because it was too costly for the people.
It didn't fail. It never went to public here.
Never did anything.
I.
Anyhow, no, let's let's get the story straight.
Okay, so he he saved the old interest surveys from twenty twelve and then changed the service area. And then in twenty twenty two, added on to the area and only surveyed the new areas. Uh what he failed to do was to. Evaluate whether or not the people who signed the petition, the interest survey, actually own the property. And one of the large property owners that he thought had an a- appropriate signature, because obviously there was no verification. Did not own the property. So we have an entire project that uh maybe moving forward. That was premised on misinformation and if we do that the wrong way and that church sues us. Then or or does something because they don't wanna have to spend fifty thousand dollars and then have to pay additional bills annually. Because they were not interested in that and the wrong person who had no authority to sign, signed it. So I I I see him back there gazing off into the distance, but I really want to make sure. That the Board of Commissioners realizing that, you know, we might be creating a situation here. Uh that the Board of Commissioners will be responsible for fixing because of some missteps taken.
And and you're not our lawyer, but you'll play one here on at ten thirty on Wednesdays, but that's okay. Go ahead, you're.
Yes, this is Gary Newbrow, Trumbull County Sanitary Engineer. Uh there were no interest surveys involved with anything here. Uh there were petitions submitted to uh. To our office that there was an interest in water out there along Elm Road. Now, our office, we use these petitions as guidance as to where in the county. It would be uh desirable to uh extend water lines. Uh there is no, there is no legal uh bearing on those petitions whatsoever that are uh submitted. The commissioners have the authority to extend water and sanitary sewer lines anywhere they want to. As long as they have a public hearing and disclose the cost, the potential cost to the property owners.
Which we did.
Yes, now this.
No, that's not saying we would do.
Regarding when the, when the petitions were submitted. Uh and and things like that, that has been submitted to Bill Danzo or awaiting his opinion on it.
What about?
But speaking, but speaking with him yesterday.
We don't even.
We have done nothing, we have done nothing improper.
I think we're missing the big thing here. Is that if this person, let's just say, real quick, Gary, let's just say that this person signed and he doesn't own the property and we know that now that he doesn't, he's the pastor or whatever he is in the church. But at the same time, if you get seventy-one percent that are for it, that signature won't matter one way or another.
Well, the, the, the tallying that we do is not even required.
No.
We, we do it to, is.
What I'm saying, he could vote no, and if that is part of the threat of lawsuit, to sue for something that there's no legal bearing to.
Right, so you, you brought up the threat of lawsuit when he's telling you.
I think you want the county to get to.
It's a local policy that we like to see uh more people.
Can I see that?
Project than not, and if we had zero percent uh approval on the project at their public hearing, the commissioners can still build the line as long as you disclose to the people. How much it's going to cost and you have the uh correct list of addresses at that public hearing. And that, that list of addresses, it's public hearing does not have to match the list of addresses that was turned in our petition.
The petition, do they actually have to own the property to sign that they have an interest in the, the petition that, that you, that you had everyone sign, the, the ones in twenty?
I didn't have anybody sign a petition, but that was generated by others.
That was the township trustees that set that around.
Do you have any type of, you said that you have a policy. So do you actually have a, 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 a policy that. Shows that you verify that the person signing it is actually the owner?
What does that have to do with that?
Yes, when, when a petition is turned into us, it is reviewed by the staff. They determine if they are the proper people to sign a petition and they also determine the percentage of strength of the petition.
And it just happens to be that you are trying to prevent that church.
Yes.
From paying for water, but that's the place that you go and hold your campaign fund or your campaign meetings. It's probably. See on your face.
My god.
That's the address you use for all your.
That's who you're advocating for.
Yeah, so you're advocating to try to prevent this guy from spending money.
Wow.
Right, and if that's public knowledge.
What a farce.
And the pastor of the church signing a petition, I would think that that would constitute that this is a representative of the church.
That's not, they, they, they weren't owning it. They were, it was a land contract, so the actual owner was someone else.
It's a midpoint. We didn't need a signature anyway.
Right.
You didn't need a signature to include that area?
No, you don't need a signature for any of it.
Down Warren Meadville Road.
Same again.
We need to run that line down Warren Meadville Road and we could have did without a petition. But we had, but I, I just thought it was a good idea if the Bezetta trustees went out and saw.
Stupid.
How the people were receptive if, if, when we do run it down there to give us a gauge of, uh, you know, if there was any support behind it.
It's dumb.
And they did.
Dumb.
And, but we need to run the line down Warren Meadville Road.
What did you say, Mar?
In order to interconnect it to the Bezetta champion system, so.
Thank you.
And across, the, normally if something. Goes forward, you have. Over fifty percent, it's usually closer to unanimous than those split even as it looks right now.
No water.
Doesn't look even right now, Commissioner.
Project and since I've been at the sanitary engineers has passed. This is the closest one we're getting to passing.
And it's not, it's not an even split, Commissioner. It's thirty-one percent against right now.
Yes, it's thirty-one percent against sixty-nine.
Before you give legal advice and before you give technical advice to our sanitary engineer, please do your homework.
We did reach out to um CCAO and other communities and other counties. One of them responded and said that if they were ever going to extend something, uh, and it's been ten years later that they would. They would absolutely do a new survey. They would not use part of it from eleven years ago and part of it.
Is that coming from the attorney?
From forty years ago, I guess according to the law.
Is that coming from an attorney? Or their attorney?
Oh.
Is it just an opinion?
Attorney Danzo should get his uh opinion on this matter out uh within the next day or two.
No, it wasn't an opinion. It's what another community does because they believe it's appropriate.
Other communities have done things that you've, that you've completely admonished.
Meeting, this is how we've always done it, so.
Right, and there is nothing improper with the way we have been doing it. We've been very, very effective through the years. We've gotten.
Seventy million dollars in sanitary sewer and water upgrades since I've been here.
Billion dollars.
Unheard of.
In the ground, uh, and had the support of the people through public hearings for every one of them.
And the support, it didn't seem like there is a, the, it didn't seem like the crowd there was necessarily in support of it.
Well, when you.
We had just as many people on the opponent's side as the opponent.
There were three. Was there, too? There were three.
When, when, when it's tallied up right now, it's about sixty-eight thirty-two.
And Commissioner, that doesn't constitute everybody that's voting in that, as you know.
But as I said, the commissioners, that, that's just a benchmark to guide you in your decision as to whether or not you want to move forward to construction. You have every right to move forward. No matter what that outcome is.
How many homes are there or how many, how many units are, are in that area?
Uh, I don't have in front of me, but I think it was twenty-seven residences, twenty-seven businesses. I don't have in front of me that might be.
And much more development availability along Elm Road.
Yes.
That's just vacant properties now.
Yes.
At the end of the day, we'll do what the majority of the people want to do. We're not telling them to do it. We're not telling them not to do it. We're going to be as fair as and impartial as we can.
It's one point three million.
But you can't connect to the rest of the people in Bezetta until you have that line. You gotta have one piece of the puzzle. You can't just skip around and put a piece here, a piece there. There's gotta be a master plan. I do not live on that road. I do not.
Okay. Make sure, okay.
Yep, I'm, I'm not voting on anything involving me.
Okay, but you just said that it's going to extended for.
The whole northern part of the township we're going to connect to. Everywhere north doesn't have water from there.
So because he lives in Bezetta, that nobody in Bezetta should have water.
That could, that could stand on trail five, the Fowler, it could go all around the rest of the county.
Are there other plans?
You have to, you have to start work at the end of the last work. If we're going to get to Mecca and we're going to get to the northern part of the county, you can't skip the middle.
Okay, are, are there plans for those other projects as well that he's talking about, Gary?
Uh, I, I currently have no petitions or anything like that, no.
I'd love to see the whole town, the whole county get water someday and sewer.
Yes.
Are you gonna pick it up?
One piece at a time, one check at a time, one brick at a time. Not gonna do it in my career. We won't have it. Won't do it in your career, but at least I can leave a couple of bricks for the next guy. Thank you, Gary.
I don't think it's a standard. Are we still going, are, is there still a plan to increase rates? Is it looking like there's going to be a half, a, a need to increase the water rates?
I think we've discussed this in the past and yes, so we are under uh, uh, financial stress uh within our water districts. And we are uh going to gauge, we're, we're going to get through uh two thousand twenty-three. Uh, take a look where we are financially and I may be bringing a rate increase in front of the board uh sometime next year.
That's based on the study that you were going to propose the increase now that you're waiting on because you consolidated, right? Are gonna do a new rate study or is it the?
Uh, we, we have enough uh rate study information completed, yes. So, uh, there are no more rate studies are needed.
On top of the other costs that people are going to incur, there's going to be that too. Okay, thank you.
Man, I don't know what you're getting, what are you getting at that?
Commissioner.
Gonna go down someday.
Rate increases.
You think it's always gonna go down and. What are the costs that we've? Sixties and seventies?
I, I'm confused about the other cost. What's the other cost?
Talking about that project too. So there are people there who are uh notably concerned about the, the assessment, which is thousands of dollars. For some of the people um up to, up to, I guess, forty-seven thousand or something like that.
I wasn't getting a chance. The, the cost that he said.
And the services.
That, that's, that's the maximum assessment and we got it down below fifty dollars per front foot.
And the minimum.
Very expensive project where you can only assess basically half of the frontage.
And the minimum, and the minimum uh amount. Uh, of the water usage was how much?
Three thousand gallons per month.
Okay. So there's minimum amounts and, and there are other fees and people were rightfully concerned because with the, the taxes and I, I don't know when the re- revaluation is taking place. Um. Do, Martha, do you know? Yeah, and it's anticipated that it's going to go up. Does it look like we're gonna try to keep it the same?
At the end of the day, Commissioner, you can allocate more, you can put on the agenda to allocate more ARPA money towards a project to make it more affordable to those people if you'd like.
Twenty-seven people, okay, um.
Just an idea.
The mass appraisal based on market.
I, I know, it's, it's more of a market stabilization approach. Equalization is what they say, that, that's.
Um, you know, it's not gonna be, I, I wasn't prepared to talk on this today, but I can tell you, um, it's, you know, property values are going up, you don't have to be genius to see that.
People are gonna be taking a huge hit with their, with their property taxes already.
That may or may not be true. We have, we have to deal with effective rate versus maximum rate. You know, it's not gonna go up dollar or percent. So if your property value goes up forty percent, does not mean your tax, they're gonna go forty.
Well, it's an.
Vote on a, when you vote on a levy in your township or, or say if we have a township levy, you, you're voting on a maximum limit. You're not voting on it, on the effective rate. It is set to, do you understand this?
Oh, you know what, Martha, shut the, shut up. I mean, seriously.
What?
Seriously, don't be.
You're so ignorant. Disregard strike that comment.
Do you understand?
That's practices, Commissioner.
Do you understand it? I, I dare you.
Why don't you turn the camera on you when you say that? So your public can see you.
Brand new.
Turn the camera to yourself.
Someone who's got, went to appraisal school. Okay, I, I, okay, let.
More experience in government before you did.
Oh, oh, okay.
And in management.
Okay.
And in human decency and manners.
Okay, I've only worked in real estate, gone to appraisal school, been in appraisal train, okay.
Um, so.
I, I'd like to shut her down. No, no.
The whole county would like to shut you down at this time.
Bye. No, 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 it's okay. No, that was, that was rude. That was enough. That wasn't, that was really enough. Just.
She's not familiar with Robert's balls. No.
Go on.
Not at all.
No. Okay, no.
When you have a, when you have a.
No, I don't, no, it's okay. You could, you could do it, then do it, then do it.
She has a floor, Martha, one of the other has a floor. It's public comment section.
Oh, no.
So when you vote a levy, that levy.
Okay.
For a maximum amount to raise a certain, so say.
Yeah.
Levy that's set to raise a hundred thousand dollars for a taxing district and will say. The, the district is its township, right? That levy is never going to raise more than a hundred thousand dollars. So when values go up, the effective rate change. On certain level, not everyone, which is why I can't say, oh, it's going to be X Y Z. We don't know until we apply those values. Just also for your patient, we're working on getting those values out as soon as possible. The mass appraisers go working, they have to be approved by the state. We will release the tentative values to the public so that they have.
It's very painful.
To their value, we will, we will listen to them in an informal way.
Yes, it's, it's a DTE form and you can pick them up and. It's unfortunate that all of our taxes are gonna go up. Thank you, Martha. Okay.
Anybody else from the public? Anybody on the phone lines? It's star six. Is there any other decent human being wants to come up here and get kicked in the nuts by Commissioner Frenchco before we proceed?
Can I say something?
Yes, you can.
Um, I've spent the last five or six days covering the clerk's position as well as my own position as assistant clerk. And also assisting the new green, but very good journal clerk in the back and um. I just want to ask the commissioners to have a little latitude with me, specifically Commissioner Frenchco. And I want to let you know, I know you strong-armed Paula Bavota Klotz into recreating. A meeting folder for you every week and I won't be doing that. That won't be on my priority list. You need to reach out to these department heads. It's not my problem if you have very little rapport with department heads.
It's the truth.
It's a reasonable ask.
Thank you.
I don't know what you mean by recreating anything.
I'm recreating, you had Paula and Don Gedion. Recreating the entire meeting folder for you. When you're already being given all of this. By the department heads, they're scanning it to you.
No.
They're giving it to you and then you want me to give it to you a third time.
The packet that I review, my review, that's all I'm asking for is it just.
That's an entire meeting folder. You wanted every single document that Paula was given. You did.
As it's coming in, just.
It's already been given to you. It's being emailed and scanned to you.
As it's coming in, it's just printed so that I see what the agenda is. We don't.
I do, there are.
I just want to continue doing what's been, what's been being done. I'm not asking.
If I have the time, if I have the time. Please respectfully.
It's.
We are short-staffed.
Printing what has already been emailed to you.
It's been emailed to you already.
I don't know what the agenda is. You give them.
Then print it and put it aside. When you see the agenda, get it earlier instead of walking into a meeting at ten, get it earlier and put it with your stuff.
You don't want to print your own stuff?
Do.
There's so much busy work generated. It's ridiculous.
Busy work. It's just basically.
It's busy work. I was never taught by Paulette Godfrey to do that. She never did that for the commissioners.
Okay. Well, this is, this is.
Just hit print, you know.
Basically, put everything.
They reached out to the department heads if they had a question and a story.
Okay, I, I just expect that the same thing will be done, it's being done and it's not recreating. I've never.
No, it's a lot of busy work. It's.
And one person short now.
Actually, two.
Two.
No, there's, there's also no meeting minutes that are being kept as they were before as well. So there, that.
Well, again.
You listen.
I am covering.
You listen somewhere, you got it from somewhere. You can listen to them on the commissioner's website uh after the meeting every single week. The whole world can listen to them.
They are coming in, can just continue to print them because I don't receive everything that she receives. And I don't always, I'm not always in the office. I'm not always near my printer. Sometimes things are going on or I might be here at different hours. So just continue to.
But you can print them. They're being sent to you. You have a printer in your office. Use it. It's a beautiful.
Need to get in there and print, that's all.
And a brand new laptop.
Just, we'll, we'll make that, I'll make that pledge to do that if you.
Asking that, that the staff do what they're, they've been doing, which is just printing what comes in that relates to the.
Again, we are short-staffed.
And so you're not gonna do that, you know what you're saying?
She's gonna do her best.
If I have idle time, I'll do it.
It's, it's not like you're making it sound like it's being withheld from. You're getting it emailed to you all the time. So all you have to do is hit print.
We have assistance. We're, we're.
Why, why are we making them do busy work? I don't understand.
We don't have.
Are we in bliss?
We're a board of commissioners and I review everything that comes in that's prepared, that's printed out and it's marked on the agenda that's not created until it's a people the day before.
So do the other two commissioners. They review everything as well. And they're not asking me to recreate an entire meeting folder. That's just crazy.
It's printing. Please, so just print.
Then if it's just printing, you.
Print it. Right, exactly. If a print, something needs printed, print it. If something needs done, do it. You're not a queen.
It's a whole lot, it's a whole lot easier to just blame others.
Chumal County, you're not a diva. You're far from a diva. Do, do your work. Do what you're paid to do. You're getting paid a hundred thousand dollars, a harder tax dollar.
But she can't hit print.
Everybody in this room and everybody listening, to do your job, just do it.
I, I do.
That's all I have.
I, I hope, I hope the public sees that. I hope the public sees that. A hundred thousand dollars a year and I refuse to hit print on all these emails I'm getting. Somebody has to print these for me and hand them to me.
Organize them.
Organize them.
Organize them yourself.
We're the ones making the decisions. Organize them yourself.
Before that, this is what staff does. This is what staff has been doing and now you're not.
Staff is here, you're not. They're diligently working every day, nine to five.
For years, that's gotta end. Let them do their jobs.
These things come in and they have a number.
It's not gonna work. She's gonna continue with the narrative. So just let's, I make a motion to adjourn.
We have is.
Exactly.
Mister Cancela Masa.
Yes.
And then. Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss Frenchco.
No.
Frenchco, do your job.